All right, well, welcome everyone to the school committee meeting of June 23rd, 2021. If you'd all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. In terms of a moment of silence, we don't have anything today. So one of the things that we're going to do a little differently, we're not going to have a moment of silence just for the sake of having a pause. So if folks on the committee in future meetings have anything that they want to suggest, just send it my way and I'll make sure we do that going forward. But today, we don't have anything, so we're going to move right into our unfinished business. So we're meeting tonight to talk about our strategic plan working groups. And so everyone should have, and I meant to make some extra copies, but it looks like everyone has, the document that we went over in last meeting. And so you can all refer to the document for the public. I'm just going to cover some of what we're going to do tonight, high level, so folks watching have an understanding and the folks here have an understanding. But basically, we're just going to go around one by one and we're going to share some ideas. So these, these ideas are meant to be broad areas of focus. And then what we're going to do after we kind of all have had an opportunity to go that, go around, and George is going to help us by putting them on a whiteboard, so we'll take some pictures. What we'll do is then we'll come back next week, after we've let those ideas kind of soak in and everyone's had an opportunity to think about that. And then the goal would be, we'll start the meeting, we'll have some questions, maybe some follow-ups, some additional thoughts. What I'm hoping to do, working with Jeff and George, is we'll probably have a little bit of a spreadsheet put together. So we'll take kind of every idea, we'll put those at the top, we'll put everyone's name on the other column, and then we're just going to go around and vote. So you get three choices. Your first vote will be worth three points, your second vote will be worth two points, and your third place vote, one point. So it should be a pretty simple process. I'll make sure you all have a sheet so you can double check my math, but I'm going to do it on a spreadsheet right on the computer. And then when we're done voting, we should have hopefully three areas of focus that will then break into groups, spend some time, two or three meetings between now and mid-August, and really kind of do a little bit more of a deep dive. So I'll cover that a little bit more in detail at our next meeting. But tonight is really just brainstorming. No ideas are going to be selected. I'm looking for everyone. I don't think we need to keep a hard stopwatch, but if we could kind of limit it to a few minutes, share. And then, once we all go around, I'm going to look at Jeff, who has had an opportunity to kind of chat with the leadership team, and he'll have the same opportunity to kind of share some ideas. So again, we have a good working list, and hopefully we all kind of remain on the same page. Any questions before we get started? Okay. So Mr. Jones is away with his family, and Mr. Small has a personal matter that he's attending to with his wife. So neither of them will be here. Mr. Scriven should be pulling up in the camper momentarily. He said he was camping, but he said he should be joining us just a little bit late. So does anyone want to go first? And I brought, just in case we need it, brought everyone's name on a piece of paper. So if we have to draw names out of the Whitman Hansen hat, we will, but I think hopefully we won't need to do that, and we can just get someone to, to go first. Steve, yes, please.
Hello. Good to see you all. You know, and I mentioned that before about that, the other group we had, and I was rattling off some ideas. But this time, I took the approach, well, keeping it as simple, you know, that whole KISS policy type of thing, let's just get done what we wanted to get done. Let's get these, and you might hear this as a redundancy, but let's get the full daycare underway, and let's get the, you know, the foreign languages back in the middle schools. I've heard others say, you know, just to me in passing, no one in particular, but, you know, maybe even foreign languages throughout, you know, a child's time in school and so forth. And that could be a, I wouldn't call it a radical idea, but it could be a great idea, maybe, to kind of going forward. But I don't mind taking these steps. If this is what's working for other districts, for, you know, places across the country, I know public schools in Massachusetts, I still believe is number one, and I've always had a sense of pride in knowing that and being a part of that. Let's just do it. And it's probably, not only to our benefit, but obviously, the kids' benefit, because we'll see it. We'll see the product. One other idea-
Hold on, hold on. So what I want to do is try and get one from everyone. You already got me two, so thank you.
Well, when I put three on the paper, I just stuck with that.
But save the third one, because I want to try and give everyone an opportunity to-
Okay, thank you.
So we got full daycare and languages. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Michelle?
I'll go. I also believe foreign language back into the schools is important. Real quickly, the senior class that just graduated had the option to take AP Spanish, resulting in not having to take it in college. The middle schools we have now will never have that option. The trickle-down effect is, they have to take it, a foreign language in college, which is terrible. Probably being with peers that graduated in towns around them that won't have to take it. So I just think it's important that we really revisit that and bring it back to the schools for so many reasons, but that's probably one of them.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello.
Yeah?
Full daycare and foreign language, I had, but the other thing that, um, sorry?
I said this might be-
Oh, well, the, well, hold on. The other thing that I was really thinking about, and this might be part of my ignorance, because my kids are young, so I only really know what's happening in the elementary schools. I think that what we've done this year with the data, with the iReady and the iRead, has been excellent in like, tracking student achievement. But my question is, what are we doing grade six through 12 to track student achievement, and not just relying on the MCAS? So I'd love to look at, you know, so for example, are there content coordinators for six through 12? Yes? No? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, because the positions that we talked about at the last meeting, to me, they're doing what a content coordinator would do at grade six through 12, right? Looking at student achievement. We don't level in the middle school, which is great, and I'm not a proponent of leveling that early, because I think that it ends up cutting opportunities for students instead of providing more opportunities for students. But where, you know, so much of our strategic plan talks about remediation and disparities. So I want to just make sure, I think we should be making sure that our students who are proficient grade level have opportunities to move into that advanced category, or advanced students have the opportunity to move up. And the only way we know to do that, or we know if that's happening, is by coming up with some sort of data tracking, right? Data-driven instruction. I know that teachers assess all the time, but is there data that, you know, a way that we can track that data? But we talked about it last minute, the fifth graders, right? How are we going to know that those students who are on the lower level are moving up, and the students in that middle level are moving up? You know? So I would like to look to, you know, figuring out how we do that, whether it's implementing another program, or a couple programs, you know, anything like that. That's my big thing.
Can I just speak to that for a second?
Yeah.
So yeah, I completely agree with you. I, we now have, so in grade six through 12, six through 10, to expand in 11 and 12, we do use iXL-
Okay.
-which has come a real long way since its infancy stages, to do that very same thing that we replicate at the elementaries. The one thing that, the bonus we have at the elementaries is now we finally have a curriculum that will follow, which allows for that data tracking to move forward. We do now have a district, a secondary dimensionist, that is also on board, that's working with both middle schools at this time, and then also working with the six to 12 coordinators for ELA and, excuse me, ELA and math. I think the one thing I agree with you on is, okay, but what's the next step? So what happens now with that data, and then how do we move people forward? I do think that's tied to curriculum. I do think that's tied to our district curriculum accommodation plan, which is all learned, that we now have, that we've updated. I guess my ask is, is that, if I'm playing a role, then I'm playing for nothing.
I know, I know. So, so I guess for me, right? So I love looking at that data for, right? So I want to see data that our students in grade, in the middle schools are achieving, where they're achieving, and I want to see data at the high school that our students are achieving where they should be achieving. If that makes sense.
Is it fair to say you want to do kind of a deeper dive into student achievement?
Yeah.
Six through 12.
Six through 12, right? Because I feel like we're in a good place, K to five.
We're in a better spot than we have.
Right.
So do you have instruction by level using data, grade six to 12?
Sure, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think, so George, I think the one thing, so what I'm hoping we can do tonight-
Wait, because I thought we were going more macro.
Exactly. So, exactly. So, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so I think if we say student, a deeper dive in student achievement, grade six through 12, that gives us a lot of latitude.
Are we doing, let me ask you, Chair, are we doing that now or after? Because I also have macro for one and two. Like, in my thoughts. So I don't know what, I don't know if we're just-
Yeah, let's do-
Listening, and then broadening, or, like, I want to do what the will of the committee is, and I also want to make this linear in my mind.
Yes. So let's keep going around, and then we can come back to every single one.
Okay, so I can just keep then saying what people say?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with that thought?
Sure.
Yeah. Yes.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Yeah, right, right, no idea.
Sorry to make things-
Everybody said, yeah, George, it's like, no, no, I got it. Get our roles. I got you.
And, and George, I think you're kind of validating the purpose of the exercise, right? Because I may have a concept that I share in this group, and I may think that's a real big picture concept. And you're going to be like, Chris, that's super tactical. Here's where we need to focus. And by us all having that conversation together, it's going to create that alignment. So, ah, this is the, you know, I thought I was aiming up here, I was way down here. Now, we're all kind of poking, and we have the latitude to, if I say student, success in student achievement, we go around the room 10 times, or nine, we're probably going to get a whole bunch more than just, hey, we're going to look at rapport, right?
Yeah.
So the committee's comfortable if I sort of stay with-
Yes, we can-
What's said, micro?
Yeah, because I think what, what we need to be, what I'm going to need your help with and Jeff's help with, is when we leave tonight, we're going to need to kind of figure out, like, what are we voting on next week? Like, what do those labels look like? Because I don't want to change someone's words. So that's good. So let's keep, keep going, rapid fire. Thank you, Hillary. Anyone else, or who's next?
I'll go.
Awesome.
I really want to thank you for opening this up to this discussion. I think it's great. And as I was thinking of my one item to say, the long list comes up, and I'll just, you know, I'll keep it to one. But I do want to recognize why we need to do this exercise, because of, and I'm a numbers person, so, you know, going back to the recession, 2008, 2009, by no default to administration or anything, but the funding declined, and that's why my long list comes from. You know, the certified librarians went away, and the start time had to change, and, you know, we had no curriculum. So, all that being said, recognizing, and like you said, Hillary, you know, you have the little kids in schools, but those who just, 2020 graduates, 2021, man, their entire generation of the education here. So I'm so glad we can improve on this. My big picture is district-wide, and it ties into kindergarten, but it's, it's combining grade levels. So I don't know if across district-wide, and I'm talking about all second graders attend one school. Certainly, we have Indianhead, we have Conley and Duval, whether that's an option for Whitman. And my thought process is, it helps with equitable class sizes. If you can combine all second graders in Whitman, perhaps in one school, first and second graders in one, it allows the teachers to collaborate and evens out the class sizes. And that would be big picture, because it would tie in if full daycare is a decision. Perhaps implementation of that program could be, depending on where all the grades fall and the students fall, could all kindergarteners in Whitman and/or Hanson? So that's really macro.
Right, so you're looking at then, if I hear you correctly, so I can put this in full it, cross-district grade spans.
Whatever you call it in education.
I mean, cross-district grade spans, K to two?
No, K through-
What are you saying? Like, what Hanover has? So like, a school that's like a K to two school, and then a three to five school?
Yeah, cross-district. That's what I'm saying, is that we combine all of our students, we do a K one, two, at Conley, a three through five here, or three, four here, or five-
So cross-district groupings by grade configuration, by grade level?
Right.
So Hanson goes with Whitman?
I don't know. I'm not making, right.
That's what you're, that's what you're saying, all right? Because that-
Yeah. I think it ties into Whitman too, because I'm thinking of the Whitman Middle School, right? There is a debate over six through eight, five through eight, and these are big changes coming to the district, but perhaps only Whitman, if Hanson schools stay Hanson, you know?
Right, so fully deep, fully regionalized.
Well, well, redistricting all of our elementaries.
Please.
You know, but I'm just saying, it's not, it's, this is the brainstorming cool thing, is that it's like, wow, we actually had a thought on something like that similarly a couple years ago.
So I think the big question, to the extent you can help kind of shape this, is, and I think you started to hit on it, is the why behind it, right? So, because you're-
Equitable class sizes.
Okay. So, so if I, and tell me if I'm warm, I might be really cold. But I think what I'm hearing you say is you're looking to kind of bring a little bit more of the cohesiveness and equity to the district, and literally, putting it together so that it is cohesive. And so you, you would expect like, kind of a, you might have, you know, all the Whitman and Hanson second graders in a building doing the, is that, okay, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Right, right.
Mark's ability to do that at grade six. Like, you go K five, it's your local schools, everybody comes together, grade six, one school, and then they move back for either seven through 12, or seven and eight. So, you know-
It's, hey, this is, this is kind of what, at least I was hoping for. This is getting ideas out, right?
Yeah. And if, if I can add on to this, I was hoping, I know you said we're going to vote on one, and that will be superintendent's goal to go forward this year, and we'll keep this list. But I would hope that we don't simply shelve this list until next June, because I, and I will get back to start times, because that's been something I've advocated for for several years. And I don't believe that that would be a knee-jerk reaction and vote. I think something like that would take a multi-year research. So I would hope that maybe some of these, if they are the one, two, three, might have subcommittees throughout the year that will continue to research, even though we'll have one primary goal.
So yeah, so Dawn, I think the way, the way it was laid out in the document, so a couple clarifying things. So we're going to go around, I'm asking everyone to share one, but we can, we can go around, and I think I was hoping for one or two, so have your next one ready. We can go around again after we kind of hit everyone. But I think the way we kind of put the document together, the thinking was, can we come up with up to three areas of focus that we can take away and do a deeper dive, right? And so whatever, whatever we end up voting on in the next meeting, we'll then break into groups, and we'll do some of that work, which will then translate into, okay, we're going to, we agree that this is something we want to look into. It is going to be a multi-year plan. It is going to be, it's a, I don't think the expectation is, we're going to get to August, and it's going to be like, great, we figured it out. We're going to roll out full daycare, world languages, period and start, no. But I think the other side, and this is what kind of we had talked about, was, it would be nice to come up with kind of our top three and work on really some meaningful progress, and feel good that we're moving towards execution of actual deliverables. And then we can kind of go back in, I think, opposed to kind of getting that potentially scattered problem where it's, we have, you know, 12 things on the list. So does that make sense? So I think, I'm hoping, if, if the committee will support it, that by the time we get to that August meeting, we've taken three areas, we've done more research, we've spent the time with each other and the leadership team, and then we're moving into the fall, saying, here are some clear-cut deliverables. Now, those three areas of focus could turn into one goal, they could turn into five goals, they could, we kind of have to figure that out, but we should all feel pretty confident in what we're doing. It's not just, hey, Jeff, full daycare. And you're like, well, like, what are the pieces to that? So yeah, I think it's, we're going to keep the list. Look, if we come up with three concepts and we execute them all in the, somehow in six months, then we can just pull the list back out and keep going. But I think we're trying to avoid, we agree on the three areas of focus, and then Chris comes up in like, you know, budget season is like, well, I want number 32 to be in the budget. And we're like, well, we all just spent all this time this summer, we spent the time together, we agreed, this is what we're going to do. We're not going into, you know, number 32 on the list, right?
Now's my shot, right?
What's that?
I said, now's my shot, right?
Yeah, so Dawn, you're good. So I think we, do we capture that okay for now? We're just doing by grade? Is that, no, does that kind of representative, if we put that up there?
Do you want four equity on that?
No.
No, I, I'm-
I really think it's for help to the administration, right? If you've got two schools and you're trying to decide, where do I put this teacher, you know, in this grade?
Good. Thank you. Yeah, you want to go? Go ahead.
Sure. And I'll actually, I'm going to ask for help from the rest of the committee, and maybe administration on this one as well. When I decided to run my, for my first term, the primary factor for me was to affect change in the culture of, of the district, right? And I, you know, there's been a lot going on. So I, you know, haven't pushed hard for that. But I've been around long enough, I've worked in the district, I've seen enough things where, and I think I've always made it clear that I'm a, you know, a big fan of Whitman Hansen, but I think we could do better, you know, in areas, particularly when it comes to kids that might not be on, you know, on a society, or, you know, whatever. Just the average kid, how do they feel coming into the building? And, and you guys might have some insight into certain initiatives or programs that have been used, or talked about in some of your professional development things. I don't. I just know, I know what it is. It's like, I can smell it, I can taste it, but I, how do you quantify that? And you're talking about deliverables? I'm not sure. I don't know how that works with culture, you know? And so I understand it's a, it's a challenge to try to, you know, work towards a better culture and be able to, you know, see progress. But I, I really would like to see us, as a committee, spearhead, you know, an initiative to, to ensure that all families, all kids, see these buildings as, as a place of, you know, like a safe zone. Like, I'm comfortable here, I'm not intimidated. You know, if my kid's struggling, I don't have someone coming to my house yelling at my kid to get him to school. I want a different approach, you know, and things like that. And, you know, I, I understand that that's a huge challenge with all the issues that come with, you know, different, you know, families and things like that. I get it. But I, again, I guess I'm looking for some help in terms of articulating that, or executing that, or-
Yeah, Chris, I mean, I guess I'm hearing you kind of want to do a deeper dive on culture, but it's where are we at, and how can we improve it? Is that close?
Sure, I think that's a pretty, yeah, no, that's good, that's, yeah.
Culture today, and how I can improve in the future?
Sure.
George is trying to, George is already, George has already tried to-
Are there, um-
I just think you can quantify that better if we're talking about looking at the end result or the students you're looking for. So are you talking, like, I understand clearly what you're saying.
Yeah.
But when you say culture, that's almost up to everybody's interpretation.
Correct.
It's your culture, my culture might be different.
You know what, so you know what it is? Like, I belong to an organization where it's, I can't remember the actual name, but it's basically based on compassion, right? And, if, I mean, you, we all can see, we all can see someone that's acting in a way that you wish they didn't, you know? It's not, it's not like they're going to be written up for an offense, or, but it's like, we can do better than that, you know? So that's what I'm trying to-
I understand what you're saying. And yeah, and you can like, like, I can have people in my mind, who, everybody whose kids have had that, and that's why you'd want every kid, every teacher to have that feeling on that kid, because that kid liked going to the school, liked going to the teacher, felt comfortable, could ask them anything, and was safe.
There's a ton of them in the district, absolutely.
And there's a ton of them that, and, oh, I shouldn't say that. And there are some that aren't.
Right. So, and again, I recognize the challenges with, like, the teachers association and things like that. Like, how do you-
But we can look at that. I think that, when Chris said that, a deeper dive in that, quantifying what that means. Again, macro-wise, to do a deeper dive, digging that down, if that's the choice, having the smaller subcommittees really identify those areas, and then we can talk about that.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Is there, do you have an advisory or a homeroom at the high school or middle schools?
Not pre-COVID, yeah.
Okay.
We'll be looking at what we, how we redo the scheduling.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, if we were to explore that, like, you're looking for a kid to make a connection with a teacher, so that they feel like-
You know, families as well, you know?
Yes, yes.
I think, because again, that goes deeper-
Right.
And the kid connection of one adult, we want every student to have at least one adult that they're connected with in the school.
Yeah.
However, now, broadening that out, every family should have somebody that they feel is available.
Sure.
Or there should be the pervasive feeling in the school, that even though we might disagree on a subject-
Yes.
I'm still going to speak with you, you're going to speak with me, and I'm going to try to do what's best for your kid. So I put, culture in terms of network of care and comfort for all students and families.
Perfect.
There you go. Got it, Chris?
I think, if I may, I think it would fall within the community and get-
Yes, I'll reach, yes, absolutely. Yep.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Dan, do you have anything? I know you said you might have to run.
No, just full daycare.
Okay.
You missed a vote on that. 12 to 18 communities on left, it's going to be a mandate soon. You've got to stop focusing on the pre-K, and at least try to be within that group that's already initiated that. We already missed the pre-K, we already missed kindergarten.
Yep.
It's going to come down our throats, and if it does, and we don't get that ready, it'll be like the busing issue, where we'll be in the hole 500,000 right off the bat, where we can't afford to be doing. So that's, I'd say bring that down to the pre-K level.
Okay.
That's, that's about it.
Cool.
So we could also call this, if we're going macro, if you call it EC, or early-
ECE.
Childhood.
Because, you know, if only 50% of the towns are going to the, to here for kindergarten, and then you go right into first grade with the other 50%, that hurts first grade. That slows the teachers down, and that's a repetitive thing up to the third, at least the third grade, I think. So if we can eliminate that, it makes it easier for these students to get better educated.
And there are more people this year via our registration already who are involved in full daycare.
Yes.
We have a waiting list at one of the schools, but we are completely full as of this morning, and we're off to new school time.
Oh, wow.
Good. Good. Thank you, Dan. Who hasn't gone? David, do you want to go?
Yeah. One thing I was thinking about adding is modernizing our tech infrastructure. I know there was a presentation done a couple months ago. I think it's something as a committee we should revisit. And then also to Steve's point, Michelle, and Dawn, I think we should have foreign language not only back at the middle school, but expand it to the elementary level. And yeah, we're well behind with universal full daycare, and we need to start looking at that, as well as universal pre-K.
Okay. Has everyone gone once? Okay. So I do have a comment from Fred and from Mike, and then I'll share one of mine. So Fred, and I told him I was going to summarize this a little bit. So he did talk a little bit about kind of the concept and the budget, and focusing on a strategy, kind of similar to the conversation we were having right around really making sure there's some definition. But in terms of a specific idea, he said, and I'll just go read this paragraph, "In speaking with many citizens and parents, I believe that full-day kindergarten for all is a top priority. While I'm not a professional educator, all of that, all of those that I have spoken to point to giving child, each child, an equitable balance, less remediation needed in not only first grade, but in later years as well, and a more balanced social-emotional start for our youngest learners." And then he also talked about foreign language beginning in our elementary grades, and then enrichment programs for music, art, theater, and other elective categories. So there you go. I just validated my own role, throw three for Fred. Mike had said, and this was, I think, a little bit more specific, but I'll share it anyways, which was really kind of a better understanding on the facility side, and being more specific, and making sure that we're tracking town-approved projects and progress. So anything that's approved, like in a town meeting, and where that is. So a little bit more of a deeper dive in facilities in general, I would say. George? Your phone's blowing up, Dan? So, I'm just going to go in order. So the, yeah, so the one that I had was early childhood education. So yeah, we got it. Just a couple of things that I'd want to add to the discussion so far. I think the key statistic that I keep hearing over and over again is 80% of a child's brain is formed in the first three years, 90% by age five. And there's a whole bunch of data research out there that talks about the experiences a child may go through at those younger years, and the impact that it has for them on the many years to come. There's a really cool, for anyone that wants it, I'll just plug it, it's free, I think, still, documentary called No Small Matter, where they actually go around and look at some of that.
I'm sorry, what was it called?
No Small Matter. You should be able to Google it. It's something that, if, if that's something that's looked at, that might be something the subcommittee wants to look at, because it's meant for the general public as an education tool. I mean, they, it just, there's a couple scenes where you, makes you pause a little bit, and get some tears in your eyes when you see kind of what, what some folks are going through. I think looking at what others are doing, and, and then I think the key with pre-K is really trying to explore, and this is kind of delving into, if we choose it, really looking at some of those partnerships with some of the providers. So I think one of the things that I've seen is starting to work and take traction, is the partnerships with some of the providers that provide these services, so that it doesn't become a competitive atmosphere, where it's like, oh, the school's trying to come in and, and take over childcare. No, there's some really nice ways to partner and work together. So I think it's just important to throw that out there when we talk about pre-K. This isn't, you know, everyone that has a, you just went to, you said a graduation, right? You've been there for nine years. I don't think this would necessarily have to be a competitive, like, we're trying to put those folks out of business. It's a partnership to make sure that every child in the district has the opportunity for those types of services, to avoid some of the issues we then get afterwards. So, early childhood education, if folks are okay, reframing that from just full daycare, that might be something we can, we can look at. Do we want to go around one more time? Or do we want to defer to leader? I have a feeling you guys are going to kind of bring us back to making it real, so I almost kind of wanted to get the committee ideas out, but-
Get them all out. I think that's.
Does anyone have anything, a second concept they want to throw out there?
I do.
Yeah.
I guess to sort of tie into what you were saying, just like the culture, I know, I know every school has adjustment counselors, but do we have enough? I'm just thinking about the social, emotional needs of students and creating a culture where the students maybe feel like they can make connections to someone and thinking about everything they've been through. Do we have enough counselors and staff on hand for everybody? Maybe thinking about everybody going back to school in the fall. Some kids haven't even stepped foot in a building in a year and a half. What's this year going to look like? Are they going to get through okay? Do we have enough staff, support staff for everybody? Something to think about, just if there's enough adjustment counselors for everybody. So I'm just thinking that we should revisit that.
Yeah.
Well, just to add to that, there's going to be challenges with the students, and there's going to be challenges with the parents, you know? And do we have enough resources to deal with all those challenges? I think that's a question.
Right. So if there's like a focus, like if there's extra adjustment counselors on staff that maybe can feel the calls from the parents saying, you know, I don't know, I just don't know if there's enough support staff that in, that will be there to help the kids, the parents, like the families that are struggling. The kids went back to school for ten weeks, now they're home all summer. Now they're going to be back. They didn't make social connections, they were in masks. Did they make any friends, some of the younger kids? I mean, it was tough. So I'm just thinking from a perspective that, thrown it out, do we have enough support staff?
Yeah, it's going to be hard.
Are you putting that, so, because it's up to you, are you thinking that's within culture, or are you thinking that's independent?
I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not.
Depends on how we define culture, probably.
Exactly. Like, again, like we said, culture, my culture's different from everybody else's here, but just to piggyback a little bit of what he said, you want the students to come in and feel like this is, I feel comfortable here, kind of like what you said.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So my, when I was thinking about this, you know, the, the social, emotional aspect was in my mind, because that's already supposed to be an initiative, you know what I mean? My culture fits into that, you know?
Of course, of course. And on top of how hard it is anyway, and then you add in all the struggles that they've been through, through the pandemic, and do we just, I'm just thinking, do we have enough counselors and, for the students, so?
Okay. Good.
Yeah, I mean, if I could relate to both of those, I think what we need to look at too is, with the structures we have in place, do we have the, does the leadership have what they need in order, not Jeff and I leadership, but building leadership have what they need in order to make sure that everyone has at least access to what they need or the communication to get what they need. So when I think of Chris, I think of the leader setting the tone that we listen to all families and we work, we truly work what's in the best interest of students. When I listen to you, I say, for those students that still need the help that that's not for, do we then have the individual support staff to help?
Right.
Because I think you could have the greatest school adjustment counselors in the world, and many of them, however, if that is not fostered from the feeling of the building as you walk in, the feeling of all the people there, then you're going to have more kids gravitating to those counselors possibly, I think that was a good one, possibly because, possibly because that feeling is.
True, yep, yep, right. Exactly.
Okay. Good. And no obligation to have a second, but does anyone else have a second concept they want to throw out? Dawn?
Under the Excel hallmark of success, one point five is the look to establish a uniform start time that is appropriate for all students. And I think that would impact all schools as well from elementary, and I know we've talked about this in the past, consistent for elementaries to start at the same time so professional development can happen consistently, as well as supporting our high schoolers and middle schoolers based on science and data for a time that works for learning, to support learning. Thank you.
I could have wrote that last one.
Fair point. Yeah.
I have one. And I, I know that this is a loaded kind of thing, but we're talking about social, emotional health, we're talking about remediation for students. Is there a way that we could talk about like class size caps? I know in the elementary schools, class sizes, I'm saying this because I'm a high school teacher, but you don't usually give an elementary school teacher thirty-two kids, but I know that there were classes that were that high this year perhaps. And COVID and all of those things, I know, because there were teachers gone and we had to put kids in places and, but you can't, you can't reach every student if you've got that many kids in a class. And I totally understand that that has to deal with personnel, and that comes down to money. Like, I absolutely understand that, but if we're going to reach every student socially, emotionally, right? You can't, a kid can't learn if they don't have that bottom level. And you cannot make a connection as an educator with every single student if you've got thirty-two of them or twenty-eight of them in a class. It's very, very difficult. I'm not talking about class sizes of sixteen, twenty-six, twenty-five, cap it, right? And then, but again, I also understand that in order to do that, you know, and I think you could do it in a way where at the high school, you can have a little bit more, and at the elementary schools, it can be less. And I think middle school should be a little bit less too, you know? But it's just something that I think about, like when you think about all of the things that teachers are going to have to do next year, it's going to be really hard to make sure that you're meeting the needs of all the students when you've got so many, right? Because that's an adjustment that teachers are going to have to make too. Class sizes were maybe smaller this year, or you didn't, certainly didn't have all the students you normally would have had because of the remote students. So that's just something I was thinking about, and I understand there's, it's such a more bigger complicated piece, but, you know, just something to think about.
Cool. Thank you. Yeah, go do what you got to do. I know you got work, work, work. Thanks for trying to, thanks for coming as long as you could. Anyone else?
Can I ask a follow-up question to Hillary's?
Yeah.
Or, and it's actually to Jeff, do you know of any other schools or policy-wise, if school committees have set policies on class sizes in the district?
We actually have, we have a class size structure in our contract with teachers, which, which we try not to go over twenty-five. Try. So in the high school this year, I mean, in foreign languages in particular, we had classes of thirty. We don't have the staff.
Related arts, sometimes it happens.
Related arts.
Depending on the nature of the structure of your scheduling, it happens. I know of unions, and I know of policies that have been enacted with a hard number. However, that usually doesn't meet with success for this reason, the transancy of, depending on where you live, and the transancy of the student body, and the fact that when that, let's say it's at twenty-two, when that twenty-third person comes in, yes, we need a new teacher, but then how does that look and where does it go?
So.
But there have been, I know of, there have been policies that have been set on a hard pass cap. It usually doesn't work out though.
And to go to that, George had the middle, I had the high, and if you had a policy, say twenty-two, and the twenty-third student was in the AP class, and I'm telling that student they can't take the class, because I don't have that. It flips on the other side. So you have parents that are pretty upset. So I think we're finding, and financially, we're in a better spot this year than we've ever been. I mean, with class size across the district, our numbers look pretty good. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt that our enrollment dipped a little bit, so we've been able to balance it out, and we brought in some staff. But I think it's something we look at. I mean, to throw it up on the board too, because I agree. I mean, I taught, we both taught in classes of thirty, and it's hard to connect when we're talking about that connection with an adult, and you have the thirty-third kid sitting on the, on the heater, which I used to have, trying to connect and take notes. So something we can look at.
And I think too, sometimes, sorry, just to add on, like, in my experience, it's, it can sometimes be a simple scheduling, like I, I understand that, right?
Absolutely, correct. Yes, I agree.
There's a lot of moving pieces, and I, I understand that, but just like, to make sure we're meeting all the needs of all of the students, right?
I think that's something to throw up on the board.
And then especially at the high school level, what you bring up is, you can definitely, it, it's a, it's a hand exercise instead of a computer exercise. However, there are many different ways to cap class size at, let's say, twenty-two, where you come up with sort of conflicts, because five kids don't fit, then you re-sprinkle them, as opposed to capping class size at thirty, where you get thirty, 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 and three.
And it works.
You know what I mean? And then, well, you got one class for three, you know? So there are different ways that.
Okay. It's a good piece for the board.
Good concept.
Yes.
Anyone else before we switch it over to the leadership team?
I think the only other concept I had, and so I'm going to, I'm going to preface this one by saying I think it's a bit early for us, but it was one that intrigued me because I see this on the south, in the South Coast where I'm working, I see this kind of popping up. And so the whole concept is around early college. And so I was trying to bookend, right? Early, early college with the high school folks and early childhood to kind of get both sides of the, the barbell. But basically, if you go to Mass Early College Initiative, there's a whole website around it. And really, the purpose of the Early College Initiative is to create and maintain partnerships between the state's districts and high schools with the state's colleges. And so what they're trying to do is make that connection in order to give Massachusetts students, and this is really targeting first-generation collegegoers, access to college completion and career success. So it's different than dual enrollment. It's, that's not it. And, and so the five components that they're focusing on is that equitable access and targeting underrepresented students in higher education. And then it builds around academic pathways, so there's really trying to create an alignment between college and career. So it's not like Steve's just going to be like, hey, I want to go to Bridgewater State and take this class. They're actually trying to build a pathway for whatever, healthcare. And so there's a whole focus around it, and then they're even trying to build like cohorts, right? And so, you know, all of us would go take a class, for example, at Bridgewater State on healthcare, and, and that would be a class that we would actually count towards college credit. There is, in 2021, 2022, just so you have some statistics, enrollment designated in early college in Massachusetts alone is projected to jump to four thousand students. So as of February, there are nineteen institutions of higher education, so colleges, and thirty-five high schools designated across twenty-three of those career-related programs. I know, for example, Bridgewater State and Darby have one, Bridgewater State is participating in some of these. We have Bridgewater State and Massa, Massa Soiet is participating with New Heights Charter in Proctor, did I get it right? And so again, I think it's probably early, but it's one of these things that, you know, I kind of want to throw on the list, I'm not, I'm not even sure I'd be voting for it in my top three, but I think it's something that I want on the list, because I think it's important for us to think about in terms of, you know, I asked, I think when I, I was thinking about this, Jeff and I were in passing having a conversation of, you know, how many Whitman-Hanson students go to college? And what does that look like? And trying to create that pathway to make sure everyone has that opportunity, I think what the data is finding is folks that are exposed to it early on tend to stay with it, opposed to, you know, oh, I'm not sure I'm going to go, I don't go. And, you know, there's a ton of data around how important that, that some college education is. So that was the other one to throw out there.
Actually, can I, did, can I interrupt? Did you have the percentage of graduating seniors this year that went to college? It was pretty high, wasn't it?
It's, it's up there, I think it's in the eighties, mid-eighties.
Okay. Those are good numbers, aren't they historically good?
They're good numbers, and what I told Chris is, my challenge is to see how many stay.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Because we, we can't, since 2010, it's been, how do, how do we get the percentage of students that get accepted, they go, September starts, and then they're home in, in, after first semester, after second semester, or they transfer. And transferring's great, but let's track that piece. And I think that's the piece, even we can tie that to the Early College Initiative, is, is keeping the data to see who finishes. And I don't care if it takes four, or five, six years, but when you have your completion of your degree, and I think that's where our counseling staff has, has had the challenge to survey out, you know, class of, right now, class of sixteen or seventeen, who finished? Who completed? And we just haven't, we haven't done that.
Do you think the numbers are low, or who's completed?
It's not as high as who go.
Anecdotally, if two kids were of college age, it's, I was startled at just anecdotally, how, like, how many struggled to finish.
That surprises me too.
Yeah.
And I think that's, so that's what, that's what some of it's coming with the data is, again, if it's, it becomes that habitual, like, I can, so I think it's just such a shock to graduate high school and then boom, you're off. Whoa, wait a second, this may or may not have been what I expected. There isn't that alignment with career.
Right.
So I think, you know, some of the, and I'm not saying we should do this, I think this is part of a different conversation for a different time, but it's some of that alignment with the career focus and getting it ingrained, and getting people started and saying, I can do this while they're in high school, is creating a much bigger success. This is a much bigger, I can tell you, like gateway cities, specifically, I think Springfield, Fall River, New Bedford, this is a much bigger program because there is significant population.
A lot of money.
They're not even, and, and the other thing that's now coming out, right, is there is a lot of state funding that's coming out with early college. So I'm trying to keep the funding out of it, but reading the tea leaves, if you see what's coming out of the House and Senate this year, there is a lot of money being pushed for early college education, because essentially, the state sponsors this, the families don't pay, and then they go. The, the higher education institutions are getting reimbursed through the state. So, you know, they're covering their costs, the kids are getting the education, so, but yeah. Like I said, I think it's early. I think it's early for early college, but.
Well, I, I think it's a great idea and worth looking into. Can, I can only imagine some of the kids that, you know, haven't been on that train to be exposed to it, to take away some of the anxiety about it, to, to, to feel like they, you know, have a foot in the door, so to speak, you know, in the process. I think that's huge, you know? And I think a lot of kids that, like I said, aren't in that lane, so to speak, you know? We could do a lot to facilitate people feeling better about their, you know, their possibilities, you know?
Absolutely, agreed.
All right. What did you get from the leadership team? Hopefully.
Not something, not too crazy. So, so.
You are crazy.
No.
Did you tell them we wanted crazy?
So, so, so we're really, we would really like to keep the momentum going with technology in our one-to-one initiative. We were able to put computers or Chromebooks in the hands of kids this year, and we're really revising how we do things with Google. So we would, we would like to pursue that if that's the, the, the vote.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that, right now, we have, we will have a little over four thousand Chromebooks in the district, which would support one-to-one. Now, don't get excited.
Wait, wait, yeah.
I get excited. Don't get excited.
Don't write that out. I'll cross that out.
You can write four thousand, but then you got to write but.
So in that.
That's exactly what I wrote.
This is important.
Starting two years ago, I saw Google change, changed their rules by which they play by. I mentioned it a few times, I had some discussion with some members around here. And just because you have, you have the lifespan of a Chromebook lasting six years, what's happening now is that Google sets end-of-life for support at, let's say, four years. So we have a plethora of Chromebooks that are no longer supported and won't be supported as we enter this. This is the last year for most of them, as far as taking the updates for their software and for their operating system. And they all have a unique version of their operating system. So right now, it's at 90, 90 is the magic number. We don't have every one of ours at 90 based on the age of the device and the operating system. Long story short, they can't take MCAS on it, won't be able to take AP on it, and we won't even now be able to take things like I Ready Read at the elementary school and I Ready Math. So however, having said that, we do have plans moving forward to, in a perfect world, give everyone a working one this year. Breaks three to 12. That's our goal for September. Then we will have to entertain a lease, we will have to entertain refresh cycles that are sort of based on the allowable rules that Google is now playing by. You know, it's like when you had a Sony, you know, back in the day. I couldn't get the, you know, if you had a Sony, you could only use the Sony thing with it, you know, because the Sony captured the market. Google has the market. So, but that is our, one of our major initiatives, that tie-in with what David's saying for our infrastructure and that tie-in for what's needed for kids in the year 2021.
So throw that, throw that up there as, as one of our pieces.
So is that, I just want to clarify because I had the same question. So David, is that in line with what you were thinking?
Yeah, that was a part of it. I mean, the Chromebooks were one aspect, achieving the one-to-one ratio, but also just overall with our tech infrastructure, like, for example, Microsoft Outlook. I think my experience as a student, I thought Outlook was atrocious. I think we should move over to Gmail, keep it all as one. But also just that the school building's been, it's almost 20 years old, right? So at this point, some of the tech that we've had is kind of becoming outdated.
Wireless access points point right to you. Wireless access points are the same end-of-life. So we then get repeaters, this thing called repeaters instead of new wireless access points. But if you're gonna go to one-to-one, the backbone of that has to be there. If you're gonna go one-to-one, then the backbone of the network that they're on is fine. The best thing we have is the fiber. We have 10 gigs of, I mean, we have massive fiber all over the district connecting all the schools. But the pieces, there are a lot of unsupported pieces to it now that we have to move forward with and go along with. The Capitol Committee has seen it, and, you know, it's been on the Capitol Plan. We were able to get the phone system that we're gonna talk about. However, there are many different pieces in order to be a one-to-one initiative district that we need to analyze, move forward, get a plan for, and enact. So that's, that's a major one we have.
So as we're gonna start to shift to making probably some more macro and trying to bucket these, are you comfortable saying that's part of technology infrastructure or it's independent?
I would put that as teaching and learning.
Yeah.
I would put the one-to-one, I mean, because when, when you look at the.
Okay, that's helpful.
Just, just put that under teaching and learning, because, and separate it, because I see it as a little different, too.
Yep, that's helpful.
The next one we talked about, it kind of jumps in on the foreign language piece, but we're gonna broaden that. A robust related arts program, K to eight, meaning bringing back more visual arts, music opportunities, foreign language, potentially robotics or science initiatives. And something we've talked about is, hate to say it, but like a life skills program, but a class, I call it Home Ec 2.0. So, you know, you're learning to sew a button but change a tire. You're learning, you know, different things, K to eight, in different opportunities. So when you come to high school or you even graduate here, you're CPR certified, you've had some, some, some life skill, first aid, you, you can, you can tie a tie, you can change a tire.
Boil water.
You can boil water, you can make pasta, ramen, you know, you know what a credit card might look like, you know, what a checking account, but very broad-based in that related arts piece. But we are at a deficit, and when I say robust, we're deficit in foreign language opportunities, we're deficit in band opportunities, we have a deficit in art opportunities or photography or digital photography at, at the elementary and middle, we're very 1990s.
And let's go more if you can, if we're going real macro and we're doing what's best for kids, then what do they need? Because I could contend that I would rather take coding than Spanish, because I'll take Spanish when I get to college. Not that I don't need it and I don't want AP, but can we get that at a younger age, coding? So that kid might then want to take the AP coding test, but, you know, so he can do that when he gets to college. Because then it's like we're not losing students to maybe the vocational, so they can take their IT process, but now we're keeping them, you know? And so I think there are, when you look at.
That's the deeper dive.
And look at the K to eight offerings aside from the four core academic majors, then it starts to really open up to say, what do we owe students in this timeframe to make them successful for all aspects of their life, whether it's college, whether it's whatever.
And that's, that's why we want to deeper dive in there.
And middle school is a perfect place and elementary because it's still fun, and they should be excited. And it's not like, oh my God, I gotta take that stupid two-credit class for my technology thing, and all I do is to use my thumbs anyway. You know what I mean? So.
Chris and then David.
I think that's phenomenal. And, and I think, I mean, we can all remember being in school saying, when am I gonna use this when I get older or whatever, right? But kids, coding, like, that's like applicable at any point, you know, and, and for, for them. My, my kids are into it, whatever, but it's like, I think that's more relevant to our population now, you know, in, in these times, that, but things like that. Like, I'm not saying Spanish isn't great, but absolutely 100%. I think if we can give a kid an opportunity to, to learn something and then apply it on their own free time and, and feel like they're gonna leg up on things, that's outstanding.
But, but just think like, I'm sorry to keep jumping in, but just think like.
He's excited. We're looking for.
We talk about this a lot.
You're now talking about a robust program where students, and you have the one-to-one initiative, and you have that technology background, then you could put in things like, by eighth grade, everyone will take an online class. You can still do it throughout the course of the day, but then you could offer Rosetta Stone, one-to-one, so it's needed for there. And one of your related arts could still be coding in a large group setting so everybody can learn. You know what I mean? So when you try to step back and say, what, how do we do things differently and how do we get excited about it? You have a lot to be excited about.
So hang on, Chris, hang on. I want to give David off, because I know he had something, he was, he was excited, too.
I was just gonna ask if the programs would fall under Chapter 74 at all? Because I know you were talking about trying to add more vocational programs or try to steer people to go towards the high school rather than VOTech.
I mean, at, at the initial outset, at the, at the elementary, if we're going K to eight, no. But the outgrowth.
Could potentially.
However, but a Chapter 74 program is very, very involved, you know?
Okay. So is it one or, so it's like, is it one or the other? You can take coding or you can take a foreign language?
No, not at all. I'm just saying, all I'm saying is that if, when we just talk strictly about foreign language at the middle school and bringing it back, I'm saying if we're gonna have a discussion about what we offer aside from the four academics, then let's have that discussion because it could mean something else. It could mean, what is it like, what do we think of a librarian or what do we think of a tech person back at the elementaries and what could they offer?
We do have tech at the Hanson Middle School.
You have, you have, you had it through a paraprofessional, and then you had it through individual teachers who fostered it.
Yeah, they still, they still teach tech at the middle school, it's not really tech, though.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, Michelle, I.
I mean, it's really not.
The way we're kind of, I think the way that we're pivoting here would be, for example, and I'm not saying we should pick this, but just as an example, if we chose to have an area of focus be robust, K through eight related arts, then that working group is gonna probably start to figure out, well, what does, that's, that's a, like, he just, this is something that would stick with us for probably, you know, a decade or two or three or whatever, right? But now we can start, now, okay, so what are others doing? What does it look like?
Right.
How would this flow into Chapter 74 in the future, et cetera? So that's, I think, if we, it's, it's just trying to picture those big directions. The other thing, and I didn't even think about this, but you, you hit it on the head, right? I think personally, I've been so hyper-focused sometimes on the foreign language that there weren't all, like, when I was taking foreign language, I couldn't just go on Duolingo, I could, like, that did, those technology solutions, they didn't exist. So, you know, I like where you're going. How do we leverage some of, you know, it's not the same. You don't necessarily need a Spanish teacher teaching you the same way. There are apps, there are technologies that, so if, that's a much better way of thinking it rather than, hey, we have to have a teacher dedicated, we have to do this. We have so many.
See, with this.
It's so different.
With this opportunity, this, if, if, again, we have our kids for six hours a day. We want to get as much out of them by giving them as much as we can outside and thinking outside the box. I mean, thinking of how we can, COVID has done one thing for us, it's taught us to think a little bit differently and use technology in a different way and see how resourceful kids can be when left to their own with some assistance on the side. So I think this is something we've talked about, again, we're, we're really excited about that. And, you know, I think everything else, we fall in with the full day K. We look at the student support piece, the SEL piece is there, if that's something. We've got other ideas, if we do a deeper dive, we've talked about therapy dogs. You know, my ideal, if we, when you talked about culture and we talked about supporting kids, is put a dog in every building or two, you know? That would be, if that's chosen, to vet that out to see, that might be something that we're gonna look at on the side anyway, because it, it supports those students who sometimes just need a friend or, you know, just different things, so.
Or a reason to come to school.
Or a reason to come to school.
Reason to come to school.
You know, but I think on, on all these things, the, 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 everything here makes both. You could see him visually excited.
Yes.
Of course.
All these things, you know, we can get excited about, and I can tell you that the principals can get excited about because these are all potentially doable. Now, with a, with a blank check, you know, it, it's outstanding, you know? But as we prioritize and when we look at this, but a lot of these things we can do, even if, and to Dawn, you say, you know, don't put it aside, some of these things we can probably still do if they're not the three. Or we can work on these in, in subgroups as we go. But these things are exciting, and I appreciate the, the conversation because it gives us an opportunity to see where you guys are thinking. And, and it's, it's big, and, and as, as I'm, he's getting excited and I'm, I'm doing this going, okay, how can we do this? And moving pieces around already, but this is exciting, so I, I appreciate it.
And just, I want to add something real quick. So I think just listening to what you just said and some others said, Jeff, that really, to bring it back to what you say, right? It's about the kids. So one of the things that's really neat about what we're talking about now is, I mean, kids want to learn.
Yeah.
Kids perhaps don't want to have to study a curriculum that is what they're gonna have to pass for an MCAS test, but they do want to learn. So the more that we can build, you know, it is really exciting. You know, you start to have some of these related arts things that, you know, at some point, maybe it's not a six-hour day because it doesn't have to be prescribed.
Correct.
Not, we're saying it has to do more, it's the kids might want to do more, and we're giving them the opportunity to, you know, hey, I want to take a, I want to learn about a language, not because George or Jeff is telling me or my teachers tell me I have to, but because I want to, and now we're giving them the tools and technology to do it. That, that is, that's super exciting, so, yes, Chris, sorry.
I just wanted to kind of add on to what Jeff was saying, you know, and how much I appreciate this, this forum, you know? Where we're all here and we're, we're all having an equal opportunity to say things that are important to us, right? It, it's, I, I can't remember a more substantive meeting that we've had since I've been here, you know? And, and I think it's, it's huge. It is exciting, it is, it's why we're all here, right? It, it's great, and I appreciate it, thank you.
I think folks are, folks are putting in the work, so it's great, yes, Michelle.
I'll just say, as a new member, I'm so excited to be here with all of you, that we, I jump right in to share how I feel, get the respect from everybody for listening to me with my ideas, and I'm just happy to be part of it, so. And I appreciate the opportunity that you're giving us all to share our thoughts because that's how we move forward, so, right?
This is what we're, so this is what we're doing, right? And I think the, the important part for all of us is my belief is every single person is here because they care about the kids in this district.
I agree.
So.
There's no other reason.
Sometimes we may get off the mark because, you know, you're really passionate about this, and I'm really passionate about this, and I'm really passionate about this, but I think that's precluded us from getting stuff done. And the cool part, hopefully, here is we can, we can all feel good about, I know in speaking, somebody said it fast, like, it, they said something like, it doesn't have to be, it, it's not about the progress of my idea, it's actually making progress towards an idea, right? That's what I want to see. I'm like, yeah, that's right, I think that's well, really well said, like, that's what it's about. It's, so, this is good stuff. What, what else, what else? Oh, sorry, Dawn, yes, sorry, sorry.
I just want to jump back to what George mentioned about coding at the lower grade levels that could lead to an AP Science exam or class. And I think back to, two years ago, Caitlin Veneto was our student rep, class of 2020. And I remember she talked about, she wished she could have taken the AP Music Theory class, or test, because she saw it on the booklet, and we didn't offer it. So perhaps by improving our musical programs or access to instruments, right, at the lower levels, it introduces a student whose family may not have introduced them to lessons outside of school, but inside school, and it will allow them to maybe carry on with that instrument. And then perhaps at the high school level, we would have enough for an AP Music Theory. Caitlin would be thrilled.
And what allows kids, like, a robust related arts program allows kids, makes kids come to school. Like, if I don't like any of my schooling, but I know that on that day I have phys ed and I have coding, or I have art and I have music, like, I'm coming because those teachers are cool, I like the subject, so I'm gonna get through the rest of it. And if I can build on that as the older I get, okay, then you're now creating that culture that says, how do we help? But I really think if you have the one-to-one initiative in this day and age, you can make everything else happen with the technology that's out there.
No, and I think that's, so that was a little bit of an aha moment for me of it. This conversation happening in totality really highlights the criticality of having the technology and the infrastructure for the technology. Otherwise, you can't really build off of, you can't build all the other stuff. So it's not just, and hopefully the public that's listening understands all those pieces and how it's interrelated. There's so much now you can do with some of that.
Now, now we have technology coaches at the elementary level and the secondary level. And they're planning already to say, okay, where, where do I infuse? Where do I not only fuse with the curriculum that we currently have, but where do I infuse to now help teachers get assessment data quicker? To help teachers manage what it looks like to assess in a way that's not paper and pen? With the ultimate goal of, I can do things better and faster to help kids learn either more or learn in a different way.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's exciting. I mean, you just, you talked about the, the totality of the, of the technology, and I went to Ingenuity at the high school. So we have a contract with an online provider who, kids can take courses. And I actually was talking to a parent who's son is, has to take a, a course for two credits because he didn't pass a class. So we're getting there. But if, if every high school student had a laptop and they were engaged, there's a course called Introduction to Construction. Like, if I'm a, a high school senior and I'm bored with everything else, I can take that class. And I have the computer, I, I can do it in my study hall, I can take it, like you said, outside the school day. But we don't, we don't offer that right now because if I, I have to use my, my desktop at home, I'm not gonna do it. But if we can provide that student a, a device, maybe that broadens their horizon and makes them feel better about school and talk about that, right?
And if you have a CHR structure by level using data, then you can give kids a better opportunity to say, we know you're at your grade level piece, so in your extra time, or when we have a power block or when we have an academic extension or something, you can now take those type of classes because we know you're not doing it and missing out on something, you're doing it because you have the ability to.
And it can be productive instead of downtime, instead of wasting time.
Yeah, there's, there's.
This is positive.
For, for, for those of you that want to try this, just, just try this, because I've tried this experiment several times and it works really well. So kids want to learn, right? So if, if during a break, you go to your kids and you're like, let's spend some time learning about something. So I, I tried this, I've tried this now often, and I've had other people try it, and it's been successful, but it validates everything that we're talking about. And you say, pick something to learn about, and they're like, what? Like, I'm on spring break and you're gonna make me do work? No, 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 pick something to learn about. It can be animal, it can be cultural, it can be, it's amazing. And, and literally, I've had my kids do this, and they'll come back and like present, like, this is what. Just because they, because they're excited about what they learned.
And they gave them a choice, they gave them a choice to learn.
So a lot of what we're talking about is, again, it's just giving kids the opportunity to learn, and they want to learn. They don't want to be told that you have to check these boxes and do this, and this is what you need to learn and when you need to do it. And I know we have to do some of that, so, but it's cool.
Cool, it's cool.
Do you have others?
No, I'm good.
That's our exhaustive list.
I mean, we have things that we have to accomplish, but I mean.
Yeah, fine.
We'll be doing, we'll be doing.
We still have to pass MCAS.
Compliance. We're gonna be doing some other things, too, but, but I think this is a, a good framework to have deeper discussion, and, and this committee can look at it.
Oh, can I add something about the therapy dogs, too? You talked about elementary school and wanting a purpose to come. Do you know Roger the Babson Dog? He has his own Instagram account. So even the colleges have dogs, I can't across it, so Roger, yeah, it's.
So, all right, so this is, this is, I think this has been wonderful. It's kind of what I was hoping we could all do, so thank you all for coming prepared and engaged and excited. And this kind of starts to put some things in focus in terms of what we can look at. Certainly, the leadership team will keep us from going completely off the rails with some of this. I think there's probably enough here that if the committee's good, I think between, I'm gonna look at probably George, but between George, Jeff, and I, we could probably come up with that spreadsheet that I was talking about. And then what we'll do is we'll kick off next meeting specifically with just a little bit more around questions. We'll try and consolidate some of this carefully, but we'll kind of work through that at the beginning of our meeting just to make sure that we're comfortable, that we've kind of laid everything out appropriately.
Yep.
I think from a public comments standpoint, one of the really important things is we want to hear from the public. So whether it's other boards or just the public in general, we want to hear from the community. So one of the things that the team has set up here, Jeff and team, is there's an email that you can send any questions, comments, anything that we've talked about tonight, you can send it. And what we're asking folks is to just send an email to whinfo@whrsd.org. Again, that's whinfo@whrsd.org. You can weigh in on anything we talked about tonight. If you have another concept that we didn't talk about, you can send it. The deadline for doing that, we're asking everyone to send an email by Sunday, June 27th, so that we can share all of those responses with the full committee by Monday, June 28th. So we'll all have an opportunity to, to review that in advance of our June 30th meeting. So we want to hear from the public, that's kind of what we came up with as the most effective and efficient way to do that. You can send it in, the whole committee will have an opportunity to review it. We'll come in, and then hopefully next meeting, we can use that to kind of define our areas of focus. Did you have a question?
Yeah, could I ask a question on that subject?
Yeah, of course.
So the way we do public participation in our meetings now is different than what we used to do. COVID obviously, you know, affected that. But just the way it's structured now, we have it at the beginning of the meeting. Do we, we want to reconsider that and have people be able to talk throughout the meeting like we used to? Is that, I don't, I.
Yeah, I can add, so I think, I, I'll give you my off-the-cuff response, and then we can decide as a group. But I think, so if we want to put on the agenda, so I, I'm hoping what we can do, because I think there's a lot here, is we can kind of get through the summer, right? Because we're gonna take three of these ideas and then, and I'll make sure I bring extra copies of that document. But we really, so once we define the idea and the group kind of breaks away, the first thing that each of these groups is gonna have to do, well, I probably have three groups of three roughly, is really define on what is the scope, what is this, like, how big are we getting, right? And, and, and the end objective is to then present that back to the committee to try and get some degree of clarity on what do we do now? So, Chris, I, I think what I'm thinking is, we got a lot that we need to do. I'm hoping that we can use the email process, both at this stop and the next stop, to kind of get that engagement. That'll get us through the summer, and then we can certainly add to like the August.
Middle August.
Whatever the August school committee meeting is, we'll put it on the agenda, and we can have a conversation with the full committee about what are your pleasures in terms of. can have a conversation with the full committee about what are your pleasures in terms of, where do you want public comment? How do you want it to work? We can try something for a couple of meetings, see how it goes. If it doesn't work, if it does work, um, does that work in terms of, we'll put, we'll make sure that gets on the agenda for the August. I can't remember.
Wednesday.
Eighteenth.
Thank you.
August eighteenth.
Thank you. Eighteen, eighteen meeting.
Okay. Can I just ask a procedural question?
Please.
Um, so if, if we look at these focus areas.
Yep.
Uh, would the expectation be for the next meeting, I know you're talking about a spreadsheet, but would it be somehow to also tie it back in to our hallmarks of success so that we can make sure it's, it's macro enough and then we flesh it out based on the presentations and what we decide into objectives and then actionable steps?
Yes, yes, we can do that. So yeah, that's kind of, yes. So we can have the name, description, and then what hallmark does it fall under? Um, and again, then we're just come together and we'll kind of, I mean, I'm open to ideas. I, I figured if we all had three votes and we know there were three, two, one, hopefully, I, I'm trying to avoid us sitting here for, you know, four hours trying to hash, rehash. We'll start the meeting with questions. If folks feel strongly like, hey, before we vote on this, I really want to share why I think this is important, great, we'll have that opportunity. Um, and then I'm hoping that if we do this correctly, hopefully we'll have some clear cut. If we only end up with two, we end up with two. Um, I really would like to keep it no more than three to start. And then again, if we're super efficient and we can get stuff done, we can, we can come back to it again. We have the list. I'm gonna take pictures before we go. Um, we'll put it into a spreadsheet. We'll be in good shape, so.
Bring a calculator.
Excel, come on, Excel, tools.
Add it up.
Related arts.
Next week.
No, don't worry. I, I got a plan for you, George.
Yeah, cause I'm ready to sit back down. It's fun. I don't wear talking once every two years.
Thank you.
He, he likes his back corner now. He's very comfortable back there.
Other than that, I think we covered everything
Yeah, I think so, too.
In the meeting. Um, so if everyone is, anything else before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Steve?
Do you mind if I just, I always like to throw in historical perspective, thank you.
Sure.
So, I, I, the federal agency I work for, my badge is on me, except my business card, just threw this on, coming down. Um, we're building websites so that people can buy tickets online to visit presidential libraries. Well, someone in the upper part of the agency, well, let me not blame the agency. It came from somewhere in the pipe, federal pipeline, decided that we'll have X number of libraries open on July first, July sixth, and just one on July seventeenth. But let's rush them all. And I am the only quarterback with the only ball, trying to build these websites, trying to keep the contractor from wanting to jump off a roof or something. And it's just all come together. And as soon as you said coding, I said, I need those kids, huh? I need them right away. And I'll add one other perspective. I was at a ninetieth birthday party, my best friend from college, which